City of Stevens Point Common Council Meeting, recorded July 15, 2024.
Just had to do that. I have seven o'clock. We will call the regular meeting of the Common Council of the City of Stevens Point to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Christensen?
Here.
Guthrie?
Here.
Keimer?
Here.
Broderick?
Here.
Burr?
Here.
Steinmetz?
Here.
Nibon?
Here.
Shuda?
Here.
Lang?
Here.
Uzi's excused, Morrow?
Here.
And we do have a quorum. Would you please join me in our salute to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for joining us this evening. I would like to thank Joe Alexander and his volunteers for pulling off another great Fourth of July parade. That's done all through volunteers. Joe Alexander stepped up when the Stevens Point downtown businesses said they were unable to get enough volunteers to do it. And Joe's been doing a great job with his team of volunteers to make sure that our community has a great Fourth of July parade. It was at 10:00 AM this year, which was a little earlier, at the request of the veterans groups who are in there. And it seemed to work out pretty well. I didn't really hear any complaints about the time change, so that's great. We also had a very successful Riverfront Rendezvous in spite of the rain. Congratulations to Director Kramer and his entire team. The amount of people that it takes to put that on is just overwhelming to me. And you'll hear a little bit more about that in a little bit. But more than 15,000 people attended the fireworks in the park, as counted by cellphone pings. And like I said, we're going to hear more about Riverfront in just a little bit. Levitt Amp, City Band, Notes at Night, and a host of live music events are scattered throughout the city. Voting is going on for the trash canvas program now through July 31st, if you're not familiar with that. Several years ago, we started a program. I put up the prize money the very first year myself with, well, not myself, my office, and painting the garbage cans downtown. Every year since then, we've had a new team of volunteers come in. They prime them, they paint them, and you've got new artwork right downtown every single year. And that's going on right now. The public voting goes on through July 31st, and they'll announce the winners there. We've also got some wonderful creations downtown, so take a stroll and pick your favorite out of those trash cans. We had our first pop-up splash pad this past weekend, thanks to the fire department. Keep an eye on the city Facebook page or the fire department's social media for future dates. Correct, Chief? If it gets warm again. Still? And it's not raining. I guess that's a key, right? We probably won't do it when it's raining. Well, anyway, those are a few of the things that I love to do in the city, and there sure are a lot of them. We're all a little different. We come from different backgrounds, different experiences, and different values. Those differences are what make a community special. Everyone has a story, and I've talked about this before, a path that brought them to where they are today. Most of the people in this room have known me for a while, and they only know a very small slice of my story. The same would be true for me knowing a small piece of your journey. It's nearly impossible, even as friends, to know someone's whole story. Yet we seem to make quick judgments about people based on the smallest amount of information. Usually, it's something you heard from someone else. And we're pretty quick to judge on that. And I've felt pretty good so far about how far we've come as a community. We were, as of now, more accepting than ever. We celebrated our uniqueness with things like Pride, Juneteenth, the Mung Festivals, murals, creativity, polkas on ice, and a bunch more. We've made some bold statements as a council condemning hate, bigotry, bullying, violence, and racism. We've said proudly, "This has no place in Stevens Point." I'm pretty damn proud of that. But it seems we're straying a little bit. And maybe it's the elections, maybe it's fatigue, or maybe we just forgot how to be nice to each other. The tensions are high. You see this, and it's only going to get worse. As the summer progresses, we've seen some pretty dramatic series of events happen. And the climate we live in these days seems to make us jump to our defenses instantly. Someone says something, we throw up those walls, and then we start lobbing those jabs over the wall. But that needs to stop. We're better than that. We shouldn't be those people. We need to start understanding, or at least trying to understand, a different perspective. It doesn't always mean someone has to be right and someone has to be wrong. There will always be bad people who are looking to do bad things. But if everyone tries a little harder to be civilized to each other, hopefully, we can make our lives examples of what we really do value. And maybe, just maybe, we can do our part and change our little piece of the world. Take that out with you as we go through the rest of the week. Item number three is persons who wish to address the mayor and council on a specific agenda item other than a public hearing. They should register their request at this time. We do not have any public hearings. But if there were a public hearing, you wouldn't need to identify yourself until the public hearing is declared open by me. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on any agenda item that has not yet registered? Anyone online? Nope. Okay, then we will move on to item number four, persons who wish to address the mayor and council for up to three minutes regarding a non-agenda item. Liz?
Yes.
It says, "Item N9."
Well, no, I, yeah.
Oh, "non-agenda item, N9." Got it, got it. I didn't see the line above it.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'm Liz McDonald. I live at 1760 Strong Savano. I just had two quick things I wanted to address the folks on. Number one, I spoke to the city clerk today, Carrie Yenter, and I was inquiring about a drop box for the, particularly for the November election. She did tell me that it was really too late for the August election, but that the November election would depend on both having the finances to do it and to having the staff people to install it. And I would ask you, as the mayor and the city council, to push to have that done because this is going to be a very important election. It's a presidential election, as we all know. And I think it would just be to the benefit of the electors to have something to make it a little bit easier for them to cast the vote. So thanks for that consideration. The other thing I wanted to ask about, it's really an ask, it's not a talking point for me, but I've heard a little bit, I think Channel 7 or 9 covered the fact that there was some discussion within the city council of looking at having both a mayor and a city administrator. And I think before something like that happens, there's got to be an opportunity for a lot of public discourse on it. I'm wondering, number one, what prompted this discussion? And I'm wondering also, what other cities in the state of Wisconsin that are approximately our size have both a city administrator and a mayor? And then I'm wondering also, is there a problem? And if there is a problem with what we're currently doing, is there a way to fix it that would be less expensive than adding to staff? I know the police department wants to add some patrol officers, and we all agree that we desperately need that. And I think we should really have some discussion going, talk to the public in general. We don't have print newspapers in Stevens Point anymore, or I guess we do. But the news that I do see, like in the Stevens Point Journal, I think we finally had coverage of Riverfront Rendezvous yesterday. So, I mean, it's really not current coverage on most things. So thank you for your consideration. And if those questions can be addressed in the future, I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Liz, just so you know, we do have the boxes from the last time we installed them. Since they have been deemed legal, we'll make sure those get installed in November if everything stays the same. That exhausts our agenda of non-agenda items. And we will move on to item number five, which is a presentation from Parks Forestry, Parks Recreation and Forestry Director, Dan Kramer. I wanted everybody to kind of get an idea of Riverfront Rendezvous, where it was, where it's been, and where it is going to be going in the future. So, Dan, I'm going to share this PowerPoint. And you are ready to roll.
Excellent. Mr. Mayor, appreciate the time. City council, appreciate the time. Just, I'm going to try to roll through this pretty quickly. I do want to tell you, obviously, the 40th anniversary of Riverfront Rendezvous is a pretty tremendous accomplishment. I can't take really any credit for it. I inherited this event, but this is my fifth year running it. But there is quite a bit of history to it. So, we don't talk in public a ton about all the things that go on behind the scenes. So with, you know, a fair number of new faces in the room, both on the council side and even staff over the last several years, I'm going to give you a little bit of a high level of what goes into it, some of the different groups that benefit from it. So, I will tell you, there's some great photos of the event. The one that you see to my left here is by John Hartman. So, we've had different times where John's done some pretty cool photos of it that's been shared. This used to hang at the Convention Visitors Bureau. They still have a copy of it there. This one's from my office. Additionally, some of the photos I'll show later is even our community media department that flies a drone for us to kind of do setup pictures, so we know what we did last year. And just cool resources that we have within the city. And because so many people attend it, even some things that are done for us, you know, for free from John Hartman, that we've been able to kind of call upon. So, Riverfront Rendezvous history, what is it? So, in 1983, for the 125th birthday of Stevens Point, the Point 125 celebration took place, not Riverfront Rendezvous. But it was so successful, it was run by the J.C.s in partnership with the Park and Rec. Mel McDaniel was the concert headliner that year. We had carnival rides in Buchholz Park, which I'll talk about why we brought it back for the 40th anniversary. There was actually a beard and mustache contest, which was put in the newspaper as one of the things to draw people down on the main stage. And fireworks for Independence Day obviously served as kind of the bookmark at the end of it. At that time, it was Parks Director Al Hill, which was the predecessor before Tom Schrader. And this is a newspaper article from July 5, 1983, that just kind of summarized how happy the community was about this large celebration, which was much larger than what had been done previously. In 1984, following the 125th birthday of Riverfront, or of the City of Stevens Point, it was called Freedom Days. So, this festival, very similarly, the goal was to connect Buchholz to Pifner Park. And at the time, there wasn't really the Green Circle Trails you know it today, and there was still work to try to acquire some of those areas. And Freedom Days just kind of made the parade, and everything connected those two park spaces. Through the years later, obviously, you see what you see today, where we have a trail, and the city owns that property. But the momentum from the 1983 and 84 carried forward, where actually the J.C.s, who was the partner then, moved to Plover and said they were going to run the festival there. So, the Park, Rec, and Forestry Department created Riverfront Rendezvous in 1985, which is why you see this year in our 40th celebration. We were talking about 1985 to 2024, not 40 years, but 40th anniversary. There was 40 different events that took place. These are two, those renderings here, again, are articles that just showed that logo of Riverfront Rendezvous in 85, the new family tradition, carried for basically 35 years. We took the word "new" out, I think around year 20. It was a family tradition. And now we've rebranded it over the last three years to call it a community celebration, just because of the way it's grown. But again, pretty cool history to look back at some of those newspaper articles, read about the mayors and the different leadership that was part of it at that time. Other elements of Riverfront Rendezvous, since the beginning, the city council and the city has supported the event, the labor. So, basically, primarily seasonal labor from the Park, Rec, and Forestry Department, with our lifeguards, our park maintenance, our forestry maintenance, our LTEs or seasonal positions that we refer to. Additionally, the fire department, the police department, the community media has been a partner from day one. They staff all the EMS services, all of the marketing things that we do. They help with those items. And they, really, we couldn't put it on without them because of the volume of people that are there. And the rest of the business model's been based on Room Tech support, incredibly supportive private business community, and then the sales that we sell for vendor spaces as well as product sales. And I'll give more of a breakout of that later on. So, the history of the bands, I will tell you, if you're ever interested, we do track it from the first year. So, we have 40 years of history of all the different bands. There are some large names in there. If you look back, Craig Morgan, if any of you are a country music singer, The Little Big Town was there as well in 2007. The Bodines were in. Mel McDaniel was obviously in 1983. I'm not a huge music buff of all the other genres, but there's several other names that you would recognize if you follow different genres of music. This is available for anybody that would like to see it. We do share it every so often. But it's kind of cool to look back at all the different bands. I will tell you, our number one thing we receive, people say, "Well, why don't we have AC/DC on the stage?" Or something, you know, these large names that you hear about, you know, radio music. The cost is just astronomical. It's really grown through the years. Some of the top 40 music will run $250,000 for a night. And when you're an outdoor concert venue, it doesn't matter what you're trying to sell. Without tickets and being able to close the access points, you just can't simply make that business model work. So, we end up with up-and-comers, is what we kind of refer to it as, local bands that might have a following here locally, or people, bands that maybe were larger, like the Spin Doctors, say 15, 20 years ago, which still brings a good crowd, and people get to hear music. They might not have been able to see it for free other times, but we just can't simply reach to the levels of the budget to try to do something that's on the radio currently. So, what do we do for the 40th anniversary? We brought what was called the anniversary stage. So, if those of you that, I'm going to show some pictures in case you haven't been to the grounds. But we always had the north tent. And up north of the band shell was kind of what was referred to as, other than going to that stage, a ghost area. We didn't have any entertainment, other than the band. We didn't have any food trucks, any of that type of stuff. We took the tent away, and we rented from Pat Dunn an anniversary stage, which was a semi-trailer. It allowed us to open the green space up for some bands that would have larger crowds and not to have a tent blocking the sightline. That stage was expensive, but luckily, two of our partners that had been with us for 25-plus years, General Beer and Point Brewery, increased their sponsorship levels to make that possible. We increased the entertainment budget by 20,000 due to success over the last four years, where we were in the black. And that allowed us to bring larger quality music performers to the event. Carnival rides were listed in the newspaper articles back at the beginning. So, we brought that back to Pifner Park with a local vendor. Sunny Hill Attractions out of Rochelle was able to come, and it was a huge success for us to have more family entertainment that people could go to during the day. The fire department did a car crash and vehicle extraction demonstration for us. Again, it didn't cost us anything to bring that there, but only possible because the fire department was willing to do that. And then we were part of that conversation for the downtown parade to move it up to 10:00 AM, which allowed us to play music immediately after at 11:30. And it brought a huge lunch crowd down to the festival grounds right on the Fourth of July. The Carp Classic also, which has been around for many years, we were able to partner with Fall Line Outfitters. We were able to bring another private business in to help promote them, as well as kind of a sponsorship opportunity for a public-private partnership. Here's just an arrow photo that John Quirk took for us. They both show the main stage area from the south end. This is kind of the bread and butter of the festival. So, this area is during the day. We're just building up here as crowds grow. Our large crowds are during the lunch hour. There's a little bit of a letdown. Then you have the dinner crowd, and then the main stage entertainers, usually our headliners, are at night. You can see all the food vendors on the right on the east side of Crosby. And then WPS has always been a partner to allow us to go across the street. If you look on that WPS lot, that's where our family fun zone is, which Century sponsors. That's where our carnival and inflatable games are. This was the carnival attraction that we added. This did not exist for the last 15-plus years. Again, Sunny Hill brought this in. They were able to run on generator power. I will tell you that the, both two evenings, when we didn't get rained out on Friday before the rain, as well as on Firework Night, the lines actually went across the street. So, it was almost too much of a good thing. But I can tell you that this will be back next year because of how successful it was. This is the anniversary stage. Again, it used to be about an 80-by-100 tent. And if you had a large band that drew a crowd, they would be sitting out, couldn't see the band. So, what we did is, we got this outdoor stage. We turned it so that you could have kind of another main stage area essentially. And we had Boogie and the Yo-Yos on that on Friday night, which even with the rain, filled up well past into the green space. Next photo. Over the last couple of years, we've brought food trucks in, so they line this north area. You can see that we had a cornhole tournament up in this location. And the next picture will show the market in the park. On the far north side, you don't see the Pifner Building, but that's the third stage. We do some intimate acts down there. That's where our polka bands are, so you can get a little closer, where it's not such loud music for folks that might not want to hear the thumping music of the other stages. But you can see, this area's really come to life with the food trucks and all the other amenities we're doing with Market in the Park, the cornhole tournament, and now this anniversary stage. Here just shows where most of the money that supports our local organizations that sell food is. They will spend three days in a 10-by-20 area, and they sell basically using all the amenities we have, electricity that even Levitt Amp and other special events use. But all of that was designed for what you're looking at right here, where the food vendors are able to sell to over 10,000 people on Firework Night. And, you know, we estimate 40 to 50 over the whole weekend. So, they jam this in, and we make this work every year. But there's 13 different food vendors that are listed inside this tent area. Okay, so revenue sources, getting to some of the business model real quickly. So, this has changed over the years, but currently, we receive $35,000 in Room Techs, $50,000 from private business sponsors, which is obviously substantial. $22,000 come from the registration fees, selling the different vendor locations where people are vending their product. $63,000 in beer sales. As you can see, we do depend upon beer sales. I will tell you though, and I confirmed this with the police chief before, we have not had an incident in the ground in a few years in terms of any sort of fights or misconduct. It's done in a responsible way. We do all kinds of IDing. We stopped selling beer very early in the evening. So, it really is more of people coming down to the park to have a good time, and they might just, you know, choose to have a beverage. And we certainly have numbers that show we're selling beer. But we are not trying to over-serve, and we're not trying to go into late hours. We try to be a family-friendly event from the get-go. And we're very intentional about that with our beer vendors, as well as the volunteers and things that are helping us serve it. We do sell $17,000 in soda and water sales, and then we have miscellaneous revenue from different things for about $5,000. So, our total revenue here, approximately in 2024, is 192 grand. Expenses, we spend it as fast as we make it, unfortunately. Bands, again, are very expensive. So, we spend about $115,000 this year in bands, sound and lights, hotels, transportation, even flights in a couple situations, the stage rental, band equipment. You know, we put a professional production on essentially. If you see lighthouse productions come in, it's the big stuff that you see at any sort of big concert venue. Fireworks, so our event does support the fireworks. It puts them on for the community. So, again, we're directly tied to, by working with sponsors, $25,000 fireworks show, which is a very, it's a great size show for our region and our state. And because we rarely fall on the Fourth of July, we bring a big crowd from neighboring communities, where people are coming in and spending money here in our community in other ways as well. We have $18,000 for beer product. $10,000 is profit sharing. So, we work with lots of organizations, I'll list of several of them later, that we actually pay the volunteer groups, and they get to use it as a fundraiser to kind of put the festival on. Then there's soda product. We have a night security and daytime security that's non-police department, tent rentals, portable restrooms, and the miscellaneous things. So, in total, our expenses are about $188,000. I will tell you, 1985 year one, the total budget was $22,500. You can see that the scale of this thing, as well as obviously cost increases, has really grown over 40 years. This is a tremendous benefit to the city for numerous ways. Not only the amount of people that come in the community that are going to be buying gas. They might go do other things during the day, shop in the stores, things of that nature. But we do show off some of the vendors that call us about selling us different products, that they are seeing about 15,000 cellphone pings on Firework Night over that two-hour span leading into it. Over the three days, we estimate, based on what fits in front of the band shell and just talking basically spatially, that 40,000 to 50,000 attend over the three days when weather is good. The foundational principle of the festival, going back to day one, is that it's free. Certainly, you have to pay for food, and you might have to pay for beverages, but you can listen to the music, you can watch the fireworks, you can come down to the park for absolutely nothing. And that's always been the goal. The council's been incredibly supportive, our business community, of maintaining that foundation of principle. And that's what we start every year's planning with, saying that that's what we're going to continue to do. Numerous local organizations, as I mentioned before, profit. So, the Stevens Point Youth Baseball, Boy Scout Troop 293, the Moose Lodge, Crystalized Figure Skating Club, the Stevens Point Barber Shoppers, Midwest Roller Derby, the list goes on, use this as their primary fundraiser. Several of those actually pay money right back to the city to rent ice, or they use it for using ballfield rentals. So, it really is a great stimulus, you know, economically for our youth groups or civic-minded groups. And we couldn't do it without them because they also sell a product that the community enjoys coming down and purchasing from them. I have to say that while my name is certainly tied to the event, the credit really goes to the employees. I'll show a photo here in a second. But they all give up a holiday weekend to be down there running the festival. They're essentially mandated. And the festival growing in popularity, size, and attendance over a 40-year span is incredible, if you really look at it. It's very rare to not see pauses in years between events or name changes. We don't have any of those things. That really goes to Al Hill, Tom Schrader, Rick Lorbet, Greg DeKroger, countless full-time and seasonal staff from the PD, the fire department, and the Park, Rec, and Forestry, and least but not least, the business community that continues to sponsor the event each year. This is the staff minus about 30 pool lifeguard and cashiers that put this on. This is our shirt color. So, every year, there's always a question, "What color shirts are you wearing?" So, we now take a photo after the event every year, just to remember what colors we've used in the past. But again, this is just the people that touch the event from my department. You'd have to add about 30 more with our lifeguard staff that all work over the event. And then if you put the fire department, police department in top of this, there's a lot of hands that definitely touch this event. With that, here's another great photo of the fireworks, which is obviously our culmination. And my last slide just shows another picture of before fireworks on one of the last nights. And I'm happy to answer any questions if there is any others. And again, appreciate the support. We're happy to put it on. It's a stressful three days. I'm always happy when it ends, but we certainly dig right back in for the next year. The 41st will be just as good as the 40th, and upward and onward.
Excellent. Thank you, Director Kramer, and express our gratitude to the entire staff. I was reminded that I missed a very important milestone. This Friday, Officer Christie Arons is going to be retiring. We try and make those announcements during the mayor's comments, but I forgot. So, I thank you for the reminder. Christie has been with the department for 25 years and went through a variety of different titles and positions and training in her time here with the police officers. And I would ask that anybody that knows Christie, reach out. Thank her very much for the service. And then Friday, 10 o'clock, Chief, is the retirement ceremony right here at the police department. So, thank you, Christie, for those years of service. All righty. Up is the item number six. That's the consent agenda. Thoughts, comments, or motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Seconded by President Christensen. Discussion. Comments from the audience. Hearing and seeing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Morrow?
Aye.
Lang?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Nibon?
Aye.
Steinmetz?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Broderick?
Aye.
Keimer?
Aye.
Guthrie?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
And that is brute. Item number seven is a discussion about discontinuing, and action about discontinuing the use of kiosks for paid parking and instituting an alternative system for paying for parking. We have Chief Cuso, Intercom Controller, Treasurer, to talk about this. For those of you who don't know, several areas in town have paid parking. You can do it through a phone app, which is apparently what most people use, or you can do it right at the kiosk. And we're going to talk about that. Chief?
And Lieutenant Joe Johnson's the expert in this parking enforcement and the kiosks. And he is not able to be here today, so I will do the best I can. And I know that Corey knows a lot more than I do as well. This kid was brought to my attention because the kiosks are getting very old. And just the paper in the kiosk costs $100 a roll. And so Joe Johnson went and looked at how much money those kiosks bring in for parking. And he found out that we're paying a lot more for the kiosks than we're bringing in. And I think this was actually in your packet. But it talks about, the City Stevens Point operates 14 parking kiosks correctly, or right now, 12 of them which are located around UWSP campus, in the hospital, and two are located downtown. Each one of these kiosks costs approximately $1,530 a year to operate. That's $18,360 annually, for the total of 14. Money-wise, I believe that as of, to this date, I think they brought in like $800 this year. So, they do not pay for themselves. We lose money because of that. Again, I'll let Corey talk a little bit more about that. What the plan is to do is to get rid of the kiosks. And where the kiosks are, we can put signs. And we can do an app, which is approximately $70 a year. Or what we can do is put a phone number, and individuals can call that number and actually do it that way as well for parking, for those individuals that don't want to use a smartphone or have an app on their phone to do it. But again, I'll let Corey talk about the savings it would do if we actually got rid of our kiosks.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes. So, like the chief mentioned, just to have those kiosks installed and running, it's a little bit over $18,000 a year, just in terms of what we have to pay to our vendor for the support fees to keep that system running. So, and then the total that we've received, I took the one-year period of July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024. So, basically, an entire school year, coming up with cash that the kiosks have brought in is $1,995. Kiosks for credit card payments is $10,756, for a total of $12,752 in revenue. So, you can obviously do the math that we're paying $18,000 to get $12,000. So, it doesn't really make a lot of sense. What most people are doing is they're just paying with the smartphone app, especially college students, you know, I think most of them have smartphones. And we're seeing that 89% of the revenue from the parking program is coming from the smartphone app. So, I don't want anyone to come away with the impression that paid parking isn't working, because paid parking is still working. We bring in about $107,000 through that smartphone app. And that's something that we don't have to pay anything for. We don't have any real investment to have that smartphone app available. The other thing that I would note is that our kiosks are getting a little bit old. They're getting about to the point of their end of their useful life in terms of what we had initially projected. So, if we don't discontinue the kiosks, we'd probably be looking at, you know, another capital cycle of putting new kiosks in, just based on their age. So, that's the other thing to keep in mind. And of course, that's not included in that $18,000 figure. So, you also have to... cycle of putting new kiosks in just based on their age. So that's the other thing to keep in mind and of course, that's not included in that $18,000 figure, so you also have to add in the cost of new kiosks probably at some point in the next few years realistically if we want to continue that program. So working with the police department, it was their idea, so I'll give them credit for coming up with the idea, but when they approached me about it and we looked at the numbers, we just thought, you know, this makes a lot of sense to go in a different direction.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Comptroller, but the kiosks still have a little bit of useful life and we could put those on for sale and sell them to another community or another business to use and still get some, some money back for the taxpayers on this, right?
Yes, yes, we could, you know, and I want to say that overall, like when we first installed the kiosks, a lot of people did use the kiosks. So I don't want to, want it to sound like, oh, this was a terrible investment that we made. I think it was something that we needed to do for that transition as we implemented the paid parking, but now that so many people have transitioned to using that smartphone app, it just doesn't make sense to continue the, the kiosks anymore.
Thank you. So the recommendation would be discontinuing the kiosks for paid parking and instituting that alternative system for paying for parking, whether it's the signs with the phone number or a QR code or something. Okay?
Mr. Mayor.
President Christensen, yes.
I suppose a motion first, move approval of the removal of the kiosks.
Thank you, is there a second? Seconded by Shuda. Now, discussion.
I guess I have a question for, for Corey. Is the rate that you pay on the smartphone the same as the rate would be at the kiosk?
So I believe there's actually, the smartphone app charges a small transaction fee as well. So I believe that it would be a little bit higher, at least it was at one time, because we don't pay for that transaction fee on the smartphone app. It's not very much, but, but it would, I believe it would be a little bit higher on the smartphone app.
But we, we wouldn't see a reduction in revenue, we basically would just be getting it through the smartphone as opposed to getting it from the kiosk?
Yes, or through the phone number that they call for the people who don't want to download the smartphone app.
Yeah, thank you.
I was just trying to log into Passport to see what Reed is.
Okay.
But it's not giving me, there we go. Oh no, once Reedie reset it, never mind. I don't use it a lot. Alder Guthrie.
Can you speak to the timeframe if this is approved today?
So our intention is to start this before the coming school year, so that's kind of why the urgency of bringing this forward in July. So we would be looking at pulling out those kiosks then after approval and communicating everything in terms of the, the new system.
And new signage being produced and installed in service to those students who are moving back in in the third week of August, give or take.
Yes, correct. Yep.
Thank you.
Chief, what's the primary zone, do you remember?
Just 1503 and 1504.
1503. 1504, sorry, just trying to get the information here. There we go, paid parking, select my vehicle. Overnight parking is $3 with a 30 cent convenience fee, so $3.30. So there is a.
10%.
10%, fee. Alright, any other comments? Yes?
Question, would it make sense at all to consider just leaving like one or two of these kiosks in operation? Just conceptually, in doing this, we would be completely removing the ability of anyone to pay for parking who didn't have a smartphone and I recognize that is like 99% of people these days, but it's not everyone and that would be a significant change to those folks. Like, is that something we could maybe consider?
Certainly, it's an option, I guess it's up to you guys. You know, we do have the, the phone number that people can call, so that is one, you know, for the people who don't have a smartphone, we do intend for that to be an option, but I mean, you could leave one or two kiosks still in, in operation. The only thing that I know the police department covered in their memo to an extent is that we also lost the staff expertise in terms of a retirement where we don't really have the staff expertise to fix the, the kiosks anymore, so that's the only issue that, that we would have with keeping one or two open, but it's, it's up to this body. I don't know if you have any other.
I think the biggest concern there is, where do you keep them? Right? Is it going to be right next to where that person wants to park or they're going to have to walk three blocks to, to get to the kiosk? So that's pretty challenging.
They would look for parking in a spot that had a kiosk they could use, I presume, if they're like of the 10% of people that aren't using the phone today.
Chief, anything to add there?
No, one of the things that we wanted to cover obviously is individuals that don't have smartphones. I have coffee with somebody probably on a regular basis and she's 98 and she has a flip phone. But this is, this is a way for her to be able to call up that number as well, be with credit card.
Any other, Alder Morrow?
I'm actually going to kind of miss it, I like just going in, putting my change in and going as, as opposed to pulling up my, my phone, what zone am I at? Does this have my license plate number? Okay, how long? As opposed to just get out, sip, sip, slip and go.
Okay.
I kind of miss that. Everything's on your phone, then you get charged your card. I think it's a pain.
Alright, any other comments?
Who would be responsible for maintaining the app? Like.
We pay for that.
We just pay, pay a service? Is that through a certain.
That was part of the subscription fee that Corey had talked about.
Does that go through your department or does that go through?
It goes through the parking budget, the, the line item that this comes or the money comes into.
Yeah, we've been using the app since the day they were installed.
Okay.
Which was, and I was still an alderman, so you gotta be coming up on 10 years now, right? When do we put those in?
It was after, it was.
Was it?
After, yeah, it was after.
Maybe.
We were here.
They've been here a while.
They have.
I remember that. Any other comments?
So one of the things that Lieutenant Joe Johnson put in here is, if we were to make the switch, our annual costs could go from $18,360 a year to $925 a year, using the high-end estimation, using the phone service and the T2 program.
Okay. The motion before you is to approve the discontinuance of the kiosks with paid parking and of course, instituting the alternative system for paying for parking, which will include some signage and a phone number to call for those who don't have smartphones. If you're in favor, you'll vote yes. If you're opposed, you'll vote no and the clerk will call the roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Morrow.
No.
And that is approved. Item number eight is on page 80 of your packet. That's a disallowance of a claim for Garrett Keterzinski, damage to a private sewer line. Does anybody need a recap on this because we had talked about this at finance? Okay? If not, then I would look for a motion.
Motion to disallow the claim.
Thank you, that was Broderick and seconded by Steinmetz. Comments from the audience? Seeing and hearing none. If you're in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no and the clerk will call that roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that is disallowed. Item number nine is on page 81 of your packet. We do have one speaker registered, Liz. It's a resolution for, request from Norman Myers Jr. representing Point Paradise Family LP for a conditional use permit to operate a non-owner occupied tourist rooming house on the property located at 1316 Ellis Street. Go ahead Liz.
Thank you, Liz McDonald, 1760 Strong's Avenue. They say that past performance is the best indicator of future performance. Past performance. The person that is requesting this, many of you would remember, he is the former owner of the church turned into dance studio, turned into dilapidated abandoned building that was at 1700 Strong's Avenue. It turned out to be a big financial problem for the county and the city and I don't see where Mr. Myers has done much to change his mode of operation. He did own multiple properties in the city and I won't get into that, but ask around about him, ask how he maintained those properties or if he maintained those properties. And then I would ask you to ask some questions if you need to go along with this and allowing him to do it. I see it as a conditional use permit, but I would ask who is going to be responsible for the maintenance? Who's going to be taking care of the upkeep? Who's going to be the day-to-day eyes and ears on that place since he is not, not going to live there? And I've also heard that he is living or going to be moving out of the state. So this is not usually the kind of landlord that we like to have here in Stevens Point for a property like this, but of course, that's, that's a whole nother issue. But I would ask you to proceed with caution on this and put whatever guardrails you can so this particular property doesn't turn into another 1700 Strong's or one of the other properties that is owned in the city. Thanks.
Thank you Liz. Director, I see you standing back there, is there anything you wanted to add? Or are you good?
I do echo Liz's statements, obviously there's a lot of concern, legitimate concern and, you know, when we look at conditional use permits, we look at a number of different things, but I, I don't think it's totally inappropriate for the council to consider denying the conditional use permit mainly because there's an ordinance that states the city doesn't do business if you were issued permits to people who are not in good standing with the city and clearly this property is not in good standing with the city. So if that's the route this body would want to go, city staff is supportive of that, otherwise the recommendation from City Plan Commission is approval as presented to you this evening.
Question Director, there is one outstanding permit or orders from the city on a different building on the same parcel, is that correct?
That's correct.
When does that order expire? What is the deadline on that?
In about two weeks.
Two weeks?
Yes.
Okay, so you could consider postponing it until that outstanding order is, is corrected or, yeah, it's up to you. And comments, questions or a motion?
I'll make a motion that we postpone until the other item is cleared on his property.
So we can bring it back next month, that would, that would exceed, so postpone till next month, is that the motion?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Morrow. Discussion on the motion.
Is the applicant here?
No.
Is there reason to believe that this will be cleared up by that date?
I would be hesitant to speculate, Alder Person.
Okay.
They have a deadline.
Tell look at me.
There's two weeks left in the deadline, that is repairing of the steeple. I would encourage anyone to take a drive-by and use your own judgment. And any other comments? Yes?
Question, how long has the order been on the building to get the steeple repaired?
I believe it's been at least three months.
Okay. The motion is to postpone until next month. If you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. The clerk will call that roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Guthrie, no. Keemer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Lang.
No.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that motion passes, it will be brought back next month. Item number 10 is a resolution, a request from Brent Gerber representing Pointer Plaza LLC to amend the adopted conceptual plan for the plan development of a property located at 1800 Maria Drive. That information is found on page 82 of your packets. Alder Persons, what are your wishes? Anyone at all?
I would move approval of amending the adopted conceptual plan for that development.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Niebone. Discussion. Comments from the audience? We don't have much of an audience here. I mean, we have, we have the best audience with Liz and proxy.
It's quality, not quantity, yes.
It is quality. Alright, if you're in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no and the clerk will call that roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Shuda or Lang, excuse me.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Clerk was just doing that to keep you on your toes. That is approved. Item number 11 is on page 83 of your packet, that's another resolution, also a request from Brent Gerber representing Pointer Plaza LLC for a conditional use permit to construct a multi-unit apartment building on the property located at 1800 Maria Drive. This is the Affordable Housing Project. Alder Guthrie?
I'm happy to move approval.
Thank you, is there a second? Seconded by Lang. Discussion there. Comments from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, clerk, please call that roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Steinmetz.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 13 is a request to acquire a portion of property located at 215 Maple Bluff Road. This was recommended approval by the Plan Commission earlier this month and it is before you know.
Move approval.
Moved by Lang. Seconded by Niebone. Discussion. Comments from the audience?